Welcome everyone to the Joint Committee on Judiciary and Committee on Hawaiian Affairs Agenda for nine fifteen. No, I don't usually introduce my members, but do you?
Usually do not.
Okay, so we'll go ahead then. We have one bill on the agenda today, SB seven eighty-one. There is a two-minute time limit for both testimony in person or on Zoom. And if we have a crash on the Zoom side, that's probably it. So we'll just hopefully don't have one. First up on S, I'm sorry, SB seven eighty-one is relating to judiciary's Aloe Hawaii Initiative appropriates three hundred thousand dollars to support the Aloe Hawaii's Hawaii initiatives. First up is Joanna Choctan for the judiciary. Good morning.
Chair Rose, Vice Chair Gabbard, members of the Committee on Judiciary, Chair Richards, Vice Chair San Juan de Ventura, and members of the Committee on Hawaiian Affairs, Alhoni Kako. I am Johanna Choctan on behalf of the judiciary. I'm administrator of the judiciary's Ola Hawaii program. And we want to mahalo you for this bill and your continued support of the judiciary's Ola Hawaii initiatives. And I wanted to let you know that last year we received a full permanent budget for the Ola Hawaii program through the judiciary's budget bill last year. So we have permanent budget package. So I would like to say that and mahalani.
Thank you very much. Next is Kenneth Conklin, PhD for Center for Hawaiian Studies. In opposition, next is Damont Kalai Manole for Ho'oponopono LLC. Person, no, I don't see him. In support, Amy Agbayani. PhD Hawaii Friends of Civil Rights, also in support. H N Warrington for Kapuna for the Mo'opuna in support. Angela Young for CARES Community Advocacy Research Education Services on Zoom maybe.
She's not available on Zoom chair.
In support, Cheryl Burkhart in support, Limo McConan in support, Sandy Ma in support, K Ewi McKeavley in support. P E Aloha Callahan in support. Joni Mae Perry in support, Wayne Tanaka in support, Aza Christos Nakuria also in support. That's everybody who signed up on SB seven eighty-one. Does anyone else wish to testify in SB seven eighty-one either here on Zoom? Seeing none, members, questions? I don't either. You can.
Yeah, well, yes, move forward.
Okay, recommendation will be to pass with a couple of kind of standard amendments. We'll blank the appropriation, which currently is three hundred thousand. Respect the date, April twenty-three, twenty fifty-seven. And we'll note in the committee report that the judiciary would need at least. We'll put the mouse in the continuing and then committee report, three hundred thousand for both FY's twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. Questions or concerns? Let's see, do we have? Yes, we do. Seeing none, Senator Gabbard for the vote.
Chair's recommendation on SB seven eighty-one is to pass with amendments, Chair Rose.
Aye.
Vice Chair, this is aye, Senator Chang.
Aye.
Senator San Juan de Ventura.
Aye.
Senator Owa.
Aye.
The measure passes.
And for the Committee on Hawaiian Affairs, Chair with the same recommendations, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on SB seven eighty-one, Chair's recommendations to pass with amendments, Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Senator Iha is excused. Senator Kailo Kalola is excused. Senator Court.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation has been passed.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much. Thanks everyone for being here. We're adjourned. Yeah, welcome everyone to the second Judiciary Committee Agenda for the day. This is the nine twenty-five agenda. We're here in room oh one six. We do have a two-minute time limit on testimony for both written and, I mean, not unwritten. You can write as long as you want. And we do read it. Two minutes in in person and two minutes on Zoom. And if we have a big crash on the Zoom side, we'll try again on February eleven, which is Tuesday at nine sixteen AM in this room, oh one six. So first up today is SB thirteen twenty. Now, this makes general fund appropriations for fiscals twenty-five and twenty-six and twenty-seven to fund a settlement of claims related to the Maui wildfires. First up on thirteen twenty is Randall Nishiyama for the Attorney General. Good morning.
Good morning. Deputy Attorney General Randall Nishiyama for Department of the Attorney General. We've submitted our written comments in support of this bill and already can answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Chair Alice L. Lee for Maui County Council in support. Tamia Machika for X Foundation of Hawaii on Zoom maybe. Good morning.
Aloha. Good morning, Chair Rose, members of the committee. This is Jade McMillan on behalf of Tamia Machika for the X Foundation of Hawaii. We've submitted some comments on the measure. Our comments contain a copy of our weekly commentary that was published on October ninth, twenty twenty-three, in which we suggested enmaquement of a fund similar to what is presented in the bill. So I will leave you to review our testimony. I won't read it here again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Derek Carlin, who's in support. That's everybody who signed up for SB thirteen twenty. Does anyone else wish to testify on SB thirteen twenty? Members, questions? I guess I have one question for Mr. Nishiyama. Again, I'm asking you to speculate, but the court case, the hearings were held two days ago. The Supreme Court hearing was held two days ago.
Yesterday.
Was yesterday. Okay, it seems like two days ago. Any, any, what are you reading of the tea leaves at this point, dude?
We just don't know.
Okay, no, that's the, that's the, that's the correct legal answer. I was just curious if you had any thoughts. Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Members, other questions? If not, if not, we'll move on to move on to the next bill, which is SB fifteen fourteen. Now, this establishes a temporary working group to study the feasibility of transitioning the Hawaii State Legislature's regular session from one that meets for three and a half months from mid-January to early May to one that meets on a year-round basis. First up on fifteen fourteen is Charlotte Carter Yamauchi for the Legislative Reference Bureau. With comments, next is Cheryl Burkhardt in support. Next is Brett Coldus in opposition. Next is Jacob Winecheck in support. Next is June Shen in support. And then Lynn Matusau in support. That's everyone who signed up on SB fifteen fourteen. Does anyone else wish to testify on SB fifteen fourteen? Seeing no one on Zoom or in person, there's no one to ask me questions of. We'll go ahead and move on to the next bill. Which is SB five forty-four. Relating to sentencing a minor defendants requires courts to consider certain factors when sentencing a person convicted as an adult for an offense that the person committed when the person was a minor. Allows courts to reduce a mandatory minimum period of incarceration or depart from a mandatory sentencing enhancement if the court determines that the reduction or departure is warranted given certain factors. First up on five forty-four is Darsha Forster for the Office of Public Defender. Good morning.
Good morning. Aloha, everyone. I'm here in my capacity as the supervisor of our juvenile division. So we did submit written testimony. I just really want to emphasize that. I've read the preamble up to the bill and it is true that we do see juveniles who commit law violations that require them to end up in the adult system. Because this bill really talks about kids who've been waved into the adult system where their backgrounds are filled with negative influences, parents who aren't there, who are barely there, or who are, or who have perpetrated upon their children crimes. So we really strongly support this bill because we do think that if you've been waved into the adult system, the factors outlined in the bill should be taken into consideration by a judge deciding on the fate of a child that's been put into the adult system, especially for sixteen-year-olds, sixteen and under. Although it's very rare for you to be under sixteen to have been waived. So I just passionately would like to ask that you pass this. I think it's necessary and it would create a system that I think would be more fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have McKenna Woodward for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. In support, James Dole for Human Rights for Kids on Zoom. Good morning. Or afternoon, wherever you are.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Good to see you again. For the record, my name is James Dole. I'm the CEO and founder of Human Rights for Kids. Want to first start off by just thanking Senator Gabbard for introducing this really important piece of legislation. This is an issue that's come up before, before the Hawaii Legislature. Former Representative John Mizuno had introduced a bill a few years back. And let me just start off by saying, you know, I'm a survivor of child labor trafficking and sexual abuse. And when I was able to escape that situation, a lot of behavioral issues, everything from shoplifting, fights, you name it, I probably did it. And what I didn't realize at that time was how common of an experience that is for children who've experienced severe trauma. At Human Rights for Kids, we've conducted a nationwide adverse childhood experiences survey where we found that more than seventy percent of children who were tried as adults experienced both physical and sexual abuse prior to their incarceration. Another forty-five percent experienced sexual abuse as well. Their, these lives, their home lives oftentimes are marred by instability, including domestic violence, parental incarceration, substance abuse, mental health issues in the home. These were just some of the findings that were reported back to us when we surveyed everybody who was incarcerated for crimes that they had committed as children, which dictates why we should be treating children differently and why many states across the country, including Nevada, Montana, Maryland, Virginia have also passed similar laws requiring courts to consider adverse childhood experiences, the prevalence of trauma, and giving their courts the ability to deviate from mandatory minimums in order to impose a trauma-informed and age-appropriate accountability measures. Also note that states including Washington and Iowa, their state Supreme Courts have actually banned the use of mandatory minimum, finding that it violates the constitutional prohibition against cruel and unusual punishment to sentence a child to a mandatory minimum term. It's for these reasons that we hope the Hawaii Legislature would do the same. Please pass this legislation. It's important to protecting the human rights of kids and the justice system. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Opportunity for Youth Action Hawaii. In support. Diane Goldstein for Law Enforcement Action Partnership. Also in support, Andrew Grandinetti in support, Krista McPherson in support, Veronica Moore in support. That's everyone who's signed up for SB five four four. Does anyone else wish to testify on SB five four four, either on Zoom or in person? Seeing none, members, questions? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to the next bill then, SB six ninety-one. This establishes a minimum age of twelve for delinquency adjudication. First up on SB six ninety-one is Darsha Forster for the public defender. Morning again.
Aloha again. So for this bill, we did submit comments because the bill addressed the issue of creating a bright line for juvenile law violations, but it didn't take into account the language in HRS five seventy-one dash forty-four, which specifically says you can't be under twelve and brought before the adjudicated without this special referral to get a, a report from a psychiatrist or a psychologist. So if we are going to create this where it's a bright line, we're going to have to address five seventy-one dash forty-four as well. So we support the concept of creating the bright line. I've never seen a child under twelve come into our division for a law violation. However, children under the age of twelve can come into the system as a status offender. So we have the ability to address under twelve. We just don't call them law violators. We call them status offenders. We have a whole separate system for talking to them, managing them and supporting them. So I'm available for questions if any, if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is James Stold again for Human Rights for Kids.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Good to be back with you all. Just one other point on Ms. Forrester's comments. We did submit a, an amendment to address that issue in our written testimony, basically just to make the, make the bill in sync with the rest of the provisions. And so we'd urge the committee to take a look at that. This issue, though, is one that's really come up all across the country. The American Bar Association has urged states to establish a minimum age below which children are deemed incapable of transgressing the criminal law. That is consistent with the UN Convention on the Rights of the Child. Article forty requires nation-states to establish a minimum, a minimum age. And the reason that it's important particularly to draw that line at twelve, first, the weight of international authority urges nation-states to draw it there. But in addition, you know, these children are very young. These are kids who are in elementary school. Oftentimes, they are children who believe in Santa Claus. They have baby teeth. You know, they simply don't have the ability to form what we lawyers would call mens rea or criminal intent. And that's really why international human rights bodies have urged states to move in this direction. And I'll just point out that not only is this something that's been embraced by the American Bar Association, but Alec, the American Electoral State of Exchange Council, which is a conservative think tank, has urged states to do so as well. And so we see states like Alabama, Louisiana, Mississippi, Texas even, who have established very similar minimum ages. And so Hawaii would be joining the list of those states who've said, you know what? For children under the age of twelve, we're not going to allow you to be adjudicated delinquent. And I'll also just note in a report that was filed by the Attorney General's Office, we did find that there were over two thousand kids under the age of twelve who had been arrested. About nine hundred petitions had been filed between two thousand eleven and two thousand twenty with about a hundred and seventy adjudications. So this has been an issue that Hawaiians had to deal with, and this would just make sure that no child is adjudicated delinquent, but that they could still be dealt with within the system, using the system that Darcy had mentioned. Thank you so much. We'd urge a favorable report on SB six ninety-one.
Thanks very much. Next up is Diane Goldstein for Law Enforcement Action Partnership. In support, Melissa Guman-Goman for National Youth Justice Network, also in support. Andrew Grandinetti in support, Krista McPherson in support. That's everybody who signed up on SB six ninety-one. Would anyone else like to testify on SB six ninety-one? Okay, seeing none, members, questions? I do have some questions for the public defender. So Mr. Dole seemed to indicate that there were situations in Hawaii where this might have come into play, but that was my first question was, what's, what would be the practical effect, do you think, of if we pass this?
The practical of, well, I'm not aware of any personally. I'm not aware of any child under the age of twelve being adjudicated as a law violator. So when you, we, we don't really use the term delinquency. That's kind of an antiquated term. So that's not really a term we hear in juvenile court. You're either adjudicated as a law violator or adjudicated as a status offender. So it depends on what the adjudication is for. If you are adjudicated as a status offender, the penalties and the options are different from if you're adjudicated as a law violator. So we split them.
So what would happen then if a child under the age of twelve is, if they're for the passive, under the age of twelve is alleged, then we'll leave out the word delinquent, if, you know, status offender, what?
So.
There's an under, under twelve-year-old status offender, what happens?
So if you're under twelve and you commit a law viol, like a crime, then you are charged as a status offender under something called a person in need of supervision, also known as PINS, P-I-N-S. And then you are brought before a judge to talk about what happened. And usually the focus is on support systems or figuring out if this child needs substance abuse treatment, mental health treatment, if, you know, it becomes more a focus on the family. And if you are adjudicated as a status offender, then you are not placed on probation. You can be placed on something called protective supervision. So probation is for law violators. Protective supervision is for under twelve who may have committed the, violated the law, or if you become what's called a status offender. So we have these, we have a clear division on how we're going to treat law violators versus status offenders. And we have this special second section called person in need of supervision to deal with criminal activities of under twelve.
Okay.
And I apologize, I'd give you this subsection, but I just don't remember it right this second. My mind went blank. Sorry.
So if we, if we were to replace the word delinquency in the bill, section five seventy-one eleven, the phrase violation or attempted violation of any state, federal, state or local law or county ordinances used, would that substitution be acceptable?
That could work or have committed a. Yes, I think that would work. I don't see a problem with that language, but I, but delinquency, we don't, we don't ever use that term ever. We don't, we don't say, we don't call our clients juvenile delinquents. That's kind of passe. That's old fashioned.
Okay, thanks very much. I've got a number of other questions. Mr. Dole, are you still there?
I am, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Great. You had mentioned in your, in your testimony, you had suggested deletion, I think it was.
That's right.
Can you talk about that a little more?
Sure. And that, and that goes back to the section that Ms. Forrester was referencing. It's section five seventy-one dash forty-four. And this is the current law. It requires before a child under twelve can be subject to adjudication for a law violation. It requires a psychologist or psychiatrist to, to make that designation. And so what we would suggest is just deleting that section of the code to bring it, to create parity there, so that it's just clear that children under the age of twelve, under no circumstances can be adjudicated delinquent. But as Ms. Forrester mentioned, you know, they, they would still be eligible for a PIN's designation and to receive treatment and services through the court that way.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, members? If not, thank you, Mr. Dole, for being here. We'll move on to SB ten twenty-nine twenty-eight. Allowing community service in place at the assessment of any fines, fees, or court costs against a person who is adjudicated for traffic-related offense committed while the person was a minor under the age of eighteen, that seems redundant, or against the person's parent or guardian. First up on ten twenty-eight is Judgment Dero, Senior Judge for Judiciary. With comments, next we have Mark Tom, Deputy Attorney General on Zoom. Oh, you're here. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair. Members of the committee, Deputy Attorney General Mark Tom for the department. And department just provides comments for Senate Bill ten twenty-eight. In this bill, the department doesn't take any position, at least in alternate methods in place of fines and fees. However, we just point out to the committee the potential possibility of a constitutional issue for title. We'll be here for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Next is Darsha Forster for the public defender. Again.
Again, so we do support the bill based on the fact that we do think that court-imposed debt for juveniles should be abolished now. We did not submit an opinion on any sort of caps for community service. Our main focus is we would like fines and fees to be not something that a juvenile has to face, that they focus more on services versus court-imposed debt. So that's where our testimony is coming from. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rick Collins for the Juvenile Justice State Advisory Council. In support. Yeah, Brady, Community Alliance on Prisons. Good morning.
Good morning. We're in strong support of this measure, Community Alliance on Prisons.
Maybe you better pull the mic down a little bit.
I know, I'm vertically challenged. We think this is really important. That if an adult committed a crime while they were a juvenile, it does impact their whole life. So we think that it's really important. Research shows that brain development doesn't really happen until somebody's in their mid twenties. Youth are more amenable actually to treatment and programs than adults. Although we're happy that many family court judges don't really assess fines, there are some cases where they do levy. A criminal record for somebody, for something that occurred while a person is a minor just really impacts your life. CAP hopes that the committee agrees and passes this bill, and we thank you very much for hearing it.
Thank you. Next is Cameron Clark, Debt-Free Justice Hawaii on Zoom maybe.
They're not available on Zoom chair.
They're in support. Next is Nathan Lee, ACLU of Hawaii. Good morning.
Nathan Lee, ACLU of Hawaii, I just want to point out some of the research that we highlighted in our testimony in regards to the, a lot, most of the research strongly suggests that states oftentimes spend more money collecting fines and fees than the actual revenue generated. And so from the safe perspective, I think fines and fees on youth often don't cut down costs. From a youth perspective, fines and fees, both fines and fees together and fines and fees individually have been shown through extensive research to increase the chances of recidivism. And so for the youth themselves, if you're thinking about what, what is going to better them, help them get out of the carceral system, fines and fees, the imposition of fines and fees often feels emotionally strong, but is counterintuitive to actually helping people improve their state. And finally, just for the community, as imposition of fines and fees, as we said, doesn't help the government recoup any losses and also increases the chance of recidivism. And so public safety is also likely to, to to be improved by the elimination of fines and fees. And so we're happy to answer any other questions you might have. I also want to note, in two thousand twenty-three, the Department of Justice issued a statement saying that there should be a presumption that children, juveniles, are indigent and unable to pay these fines and fees. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Opportunity for Youth Action Hawaii. In support, next is Jamie Miller for Ekolu Mea Nui. In support, next is Aubrey K. Aloha Zoe, oh, I'm sorry, the different names. Aubrey K. Loa, Zoe Martinez, Oh, Oh Hawaii Manuel for Na Opio, Na Opio YY. In support, and Angela, Angela Young. On Zoom perhaps?
She's not available on Zoom.
Okay, she's, she's in support too. That's everybody who signed up on SB ten twenty-eight. Does anyone else like to testify on SB ten twenty-eight either on Zoom or here? Seeing none, members, questions? I do have a question for Ms. Forrester, if you don't mind. So, so this bill allows for for trans, transmuting, transmitting, changing the fines and fees to community service obligations. So what happens if the juvenile doesn't actually complete their community service obligation?
I think it's going to depend on the age and circumstances of the child and what's happening with them. And whether they're.
Under this bill, it, it doesn't, it doesn't revert back to a finer fee if they don't, or how do you read that?
I think it would not revert back. It would stay community service and it would be up to the family court judge to determine how to move forward. Is the family court judge going to postpone a court date, set a further hearing? How are we going to monitor it or make arrangements maybe for the child to be able to participate in a community service program if they can't do it on their own? It really is going to depend on the age of the child. There's a big difference between a fourteen-year-old and a seventeen-year-old. So I, my answer is I think it would be up to the judge depending on the individual.
The bill itself doesn't specify.
No.
Okay, so this, the bill doesn't address this, but is, is it a current process when, when a young person does not comply with a court-ordered finer fee?
The process is that the issue is brought up at what we call a further disposition hearing. So we go before the judge and we talk about why it wasn't done and what happened. It could be you don't finish it in the time you were given because you're now homeless. It might be you couldn't do the community service because you were required to do residential substance abuse treatment. You know, so the court will look at the factors and a lot of times we just do further hearings to give the minor more time. In the end, though, I think it would be one hundred percent up to the judge on whether or not they would ultimately set it aside or perhaps convert it if that's what the minor would prefer. Like if you're seventeen and you have a job. Like if you're seventeen and you have a job, and this is community service from when you were fifteen, and it's still outstanding, they might say, can I just pay it? So maybe we would make arrangements for that, but it's age-dependent and it's their circumstance-dependent.
Okay, thank you. Members, other questions?
Yes, I do.
Senator Sam Bonetour.
Yeah, come on up, Darcy. Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious, what kind of? What kind of crimes are um youths being fined for?
Cause I haven't seen it. Rare. Uh, it is very, very rare. I think the reason that the. The bill talks about converting community service for driving without license because that's a mandatory fine. And so they wanna be able to give the, they wanna walk away from the mandatory nature of it, because we do have kids who. Don't have any money, kids in foster care or. Like actually living in their car with their family. So I think it's to prevent it from it being a mandatory situation. To give a little bit of flexibility.
Okay, for the, for those sentences where there is a mandatory. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, members? If not, we'll go ahead and move on. Next bill up is. SB thirteen ten, it deletes the term agent of a contractor in section twenty eight seventeen. Eight forty six two point seven to comply with requirements of the Federal Bureau of Investigation. Uh, the FBI deemed the term overly broad for purposes of accessing its criminal history background information. Um, first up on. Thirteen ten is Philip Higdon for the Department of Attorney General. Off, you're here. Morning.
Morning, Chair Rhodes Committee members. My name is Phil Higdon, I'm administrator of Hawaii Criminal Justice Data Center. The department has submitted written testimony sporting this bill with comments. Uh, the bill amend section, the sections mentioned earlier of the revised statute by deleting the term agents of contractors. Currently, uh, the process, well, the process is for a non-criminal justice agency. To have authority to fingerprint and to receive a full criminal background, convictions and arrests. They have to, the statute has to be reviewed by the FBI legal. Uh, unfortunately, uh, the bill has to pass before the FBI legal team will either approve or deny. Uh, so, uh, as stated, the FBI deemed that agents of contractors was too broad. And so we're asking for that term to be deleted and be more consistent with the other statutes in eight forty six two point seven. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that's everyone who's signed up for SB thirteen ten. Does anyone else wish to testify in SB thirteen ten? Seeing none, members, questions? I do have a question for you, Mr. Higdon.
Yes, sir.
Um, so, did, how? This is, it is sort of feels like a crapshoot here. So we changed the law and then we send that, we fly that up the flagpole and the FBI. And put that up the flagpole and the FBI, FBI doesn't salute that either. How do we know, were, were there specific concerns that they? They say this specific language is what we don't like, or?
Well. They give recommendations and they come back and they say, they, this, they say this is the language we do not like. In this, in this bill, in this statute, in subsection forty nine, it was just the terms agents of contractors. Unfortunately, it takes, they wait, they wait till the bill passes, and it's about a year, if not more. Before we get a response back, whether the agency is authorized their fingerprint or not. Until then, agencies are only authorized to get conviction information. So kind, it's kind of a crapshoot, so we're trying to have the FBI provide us. Uh, guidance on, or so we can let the agencies know, this is how you need to write the statute to get authorization.
Is this, is this the, the, the document that they returned to you? Can we look at it?
Sure.
Okay, uh, cause I think.
In this one specifically?
Yeah, I just, we'd like to see what they, what they're, so, I mean, just try to match it as best we can.
Right.
Be sure that, what you put in, I mean, I, I don't have any reason to doubt that what you guys are suggesting is a problem. I just. I just don't like doing the same bill over and over again.
I, I, I totally agree with you. Um. If you look at the statutes, everybody has authority, there may be a little bit of different uh terms, but it's, we try to be consistent with contractors. Or, or employees or potential employees.
Okay.
They just didn't like the word agents of contractors.
All right.
But I can provide that to you. Yes, sir.
Other questions on this one? If not, let's go and move on. Uh, SB thirteen nineteen is next. This requires the Attorney General's identification system. To include criminal cases initiated via citations that resulted in conviction deferred maintenance, acceptance of guilty or nolo contendere. Clear conditional discharge and then a court order identification. Processing. In, in such cases. Uh, first up on thirteen nineteen is Elise Cien Oyama, Deputy Attorney General. On, oh, oh, Mr. Tom, good morning.
Why, Chair, member of the committee, um Deputy Attorney General Mark Tom for the department. I was here because I wanted to steal her thunder, so. Um. Basically, the department stands in strong support of this bill. Uh, this will require the procedure, what's known as identification processing. Uh, for at least now misdemeanors, petty misdemeanors and violations when it's initiated by citation. Um, having this bill passed would ensure that the data collected will be accurate, reliable. Um, for Hawaii Criminal Justice Data Center, um, that's accessed by courts, uh, utilized at least by. Other data by the courts and um law enforcement, as well as some, a lot of authorized agencies. So, um, we do strong, stand in strong support and we'll be here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Charlene Lau for Honolulu Police Department on Zoom perhaps?
She's not present on Zoom, Chair.
Uh, in support. That's everybody who signed up on SB thirteen nineteen. Does anyone else wish to testify in SB thirteen nineteen? Seeing none, members, questions? Uh, Mr. Tom, you mind coming back? Um. So like, I'm still trying to process what this means. So the system does not account for any convictions from misdemeanors. Petty misdemeanors or violation level cases that were initiated by citation. So, nothing, there's nothing, I mean. How long is this one going on?
So, so we can still see that there's um, and I'm lucky because Phil is actually here as well. He is um intimately involved with that data system. So if I'm saying anything wrong, Phil, please feel free to step up.
What should come up to, Mr. Higdon?
And um. If a, if a case goes to the courts, there is. An indication that there's a conviction. It's just that if it's a citation like um for a case where they were not arrested. And they're just giving a citation and a court date to come to court.
Mm-hmm.
They're not taking over to um. HPD or to in, in, in regards to like a state-initiated case, like a sheriff in Keavie Street. And to do fingerprinting and picture-taking, to know that that's the. To confirm that that person is the person that's being cited for this charge. So it's not like there's no documentation, it's just that that ID processing process is not done for those citation cases. If that makes sense.
So this bill would require it, or?
It would require it, so. When that would happen, um, that would be ensuring just that for that case, like say a driving without license. That that person would at some point have to go down to, if it's a HPD case, go down to the police department to do fingerprinting, take a picture. Make sure that that. That citation is connected to those, that person.
But law enforcement could still use a citation as a way to charge.
They're still using a citation to charge.
Okay.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, just, uh, one, one second. Um, so. Okay, so, but in terms of like backup or, or bail. Is, is this, is this the information that's used to set bail?
It, it can, it can be used to set bail to, to see all the um convictions that they might have or, or at least charges. Um, if they were not processed for at least. The Hawaii data, Criminal Justice Data Center. You could still look at, say. They're in E Court Kukula and see like, oh, these cases were citations, and this is the disposition of them and say, oh, they had. Say, five driving down license, four no motor vehicle. Sure, you can still see that in its space, but you just doesn't have the, the. Fingerprinting pictures to confirm the identity.
Feel a little better. Go ahead, Senator Sam Bonetour.
Okay, so, yesterday, when we were talking about court cases and expungement. I noticed that E Court Kukula doesn't have citations anymore. They actually have case numbers. So have you folks talked to the courts as to why we, because this bill basically requires the court to facilitate it. By, um, sorry, all of a sudden, something popped up and. By. By ordering identification processing in such cases. I think the courts are already doing that. Cause I don't see anybody, I don't see a Wong here who normally would be talking about the judiciary. I, I'm suggesting you folks talk to, or even just look at E Court Kukua now. You don't see citations anymore. You see, you see actual case numbers.
Ye- yes, in E Court Kukua, you'll see the case number.
Yeah, and it used to be citation. So. This bill, I think. Um. Does not. I mean, I think you folks need to talk to judiciary because I, I don't think it's necessary. Because uh, I believe the courts are already having identification processing in those cases, at least that portion.
So they're not, they're not ordering it for citation-type cases. So in terms of the fingerprinting and going down to be. Um, fingerprinting and take process, they're not um doing that. Now, they. Could, they cannot order it for citation cases per statute, and so it's not being done. If they are arrested though. Um, and instead of a citation, they come across, like I say, an assault three, and they decide to arrest at that point. And take them down to the station, then they will be processed. But if, for some reason, in, in a weird scenario where in assault three, that they issue only a citation. They would not be fingerprinted for that particular case.
If we pass this, because it's violation-level cases that were initiated by citation. You're talking about parking tickets, speeding tickets.
No, the speeding tickets are infractions. So it would be um violation-type offenses, so um. Let me take some, so say like no motor vehicle insurance is a first offense in the last five years. Um, another violation, some of the other charges would be, um.
Wow.
Yeah, well, okay, so there's, there's, there's a confusion, because violation, of course, is itself a technical term in the penal.
Yeah, so violations actually have a, a mustappear date, right? So they issue a violation and you come to court. And whereas an infraction, like a speeding ticket or running a red light or a parking ticket, those can be paid. Those are not encompassed in this. They're not being ID processed for uh parking tickets or speeding tickets. At, when I say speeding tickets, there's excessive speeding, which is a petty, but for speeding tickets just as an infraction. Um, those are not being encompassed in this type of uh process of ID processing, and you get corrected if I'm wrong with that.
You're, you're correct.
So reckless driving will be one of those.
Will.
Would, would require this.
Yes, if they were issued a citation for reckless driving, then at some point, for that case, they would be ID. Uh, identification processed.
Um, even if there was. Even if there was no conviction. Because it says also nolo contendere pleas. So you're gonna. Basically, you're gonna ask for processing even before a conviction. Because it's a pawn plea, which is arraignment.
Well, pawn plea, so I mean, if they.
It says so.
They're convicted, then they would. Do, be ID processed. Correct?
Yes. They're only ID processed if they are convicted.
Well, does nolo contendere, nolo contendere and uh delayed acceptance, those count?
According to those.
Those, those would be, they would be essentially the, the sentencing is. Um, not imposed at that time for at least the deferred until they finish, so they would be processed.
Okay, I don't.
Let me ask, so in terms of uh Senator Sam Bonetour's questions about, or a point about the citation versus a case number. So if you're cited, if you just have a citation, you don't automatically generate a case number? Is it, or does it eventually get turned into a case number somehow?
It will. If there's a citation, let's say, the most common, like, right, a driving without license, they give a citation. Um, that will sent to the courts and the courts will create a case.
And that's what would end up on the, on Eco, Eco.
That, that is correct. Not the citation number, but actually the court case number, yes.
Okay, so it does get converted.
Yeah, it does.
Okay. Um, the other question I had is, so are we missing anything else in this? Is there some other uh? Way to, I mean, there's a number of ways to be charged, so are we, we, is this, will this cover everything?
This should cover everything because the alternative is arrest, and when they are arrested, they would be automatically ID processed. Um, it's just purely on cases like where they will. Law enforcement will routinely issue a citation. Those cases are just kind of not being covered for ID processing purposes.
Okay, understood. Other questions or concerns? If not, we'll go ahead and move on to SB fifteen forty five. This is repeals language in the state's code of ethics that exempts the legislative branch from prohibitions against nepotism in public employment. First up on fifteen forty five is Robert Harris for the Hawaii State Ethics Commission.
Yes, they're present on Zoom, Chair.
There he is. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, members of the committee. Robert Harris on behalf of the State Ethics Commission. Uh, the commission has not yet had an opportunity to review this bill, so we're simply submitting comments on behalf of staff. We believe the commission would be in support of this bill. Available if you have any comp questions.
Okay, thank you. Next is B, B Smith in support, Cindy Noelis, Noelis in support. Lynn Manassal in support, Sarah E in support, Michael Nomura in support. That's everybody who signed up on SB fifteen forty five. Anybody else wish to testify? Yep, come on up. If you could say that again into the mic, that'd be appreciated.
PM Mazenga in opposition.
Okay, please proceed.
You know, in America, we have anti-nepotism laws in the federal and also in the state. And it's because the practice of hiring relatives actually really undermines public confidence. Public confidence essential in maintaining, particularly in an island state as we have. Uh, where oftentimes political power and public will tilt the scale of justice. Uh, may we remind you of the negative consequences of nepotism, which include, but not limited to, the places, the placement of incompetence. Uh, the, the place, the placement of the unqualified. Not to mention to, leading to poor decision-making, missing opportunities for growth, team resentment, breeding, favoritism. Uh, creating a, a toxic environment, high staff turnover, and the unvaluing and. Um, marginalization of employees. Even the possibility of civil rights violations, which could lead to grounds for lawsuit. Let's avoid these by fostering a meritocrit culture within the framework of our American value system. Mahalo.
Thank you. I, I think you actually support the bill because this gets rid of an exemption. Right now, we, we can hire our relatives here at the legislature, but if this bill passes, we wouldn't be able to.
My understanding is that it applies also to legislative and judicial.
Uh, the judiciary has its own.
As it was written, it, it, it implied that it was.
Yeah, it might, it might imply that, but it, that doesn't really work. So, but anyway, I think you actually support the bill because it will restrict nepotism.
Please do so. Thanks, thank you.
Uh, anyone else like to testify in SB fifteen forty five? Seeing none. Members, questions?
Yeah, I do.
Senator, Senator Bonetour.
Sorry, um. Whoever it was who just last spoke, you're the only one who testified. So come on up. Oh, this, oh, Harris is also here? Okay, oh, I'll talk to Harris then. Um, Mr. Harris, are you present?
I am, Senator.
Okay, so, um. My concern about this bill is basically the bright line like the last person talked about. That it automatically assumes that somebody who we hire as a. I mean, this, the Senate already has an anti-nepotism, but um. But frankly, so it prevents me from hiring my sister, who is an ER doctor and who would have helped me, who'd helped me a lot. In determining my health bills. And I certainly can't afford an ER doctor working for me under the legislative salary, but you know. So it, it goes beyond whether or not we can. We hire by merit, or whether or not we hire within, or we hot. Even if they have a. Familial relationship. Familial relationship with us. Right? Uh if we pass this bill. Even if our. Well, like JFK hiring his brother RFK as Attorney General. If this has passed in the legislature and they were legislators. JFK would not have been able to have to hire RFK, right? Regardless of his ability.
Yeah, I couldn't point about the federal situation. I can note that the current nepotism law, which applies to. Everyone who's not in legislative or judicial branches. Has a good cause exception. That good cause exception is. Typically applied for situations where there are no other applicants or remote locations or there's unique skill sets or experience.
Oh.
Um the intent is that it's not supposed to be applied frequently. And I think part of the intent of a bright line rule is the public looking in may not necessarily understand. That, you know, this is the best candidate for the position. They're just going to simply see the nepotism that creates that lack of confidence in in government. So the reason why we. All the good cause exception uh to date, we've published every, you know, decision. And parts of the public can see why this candidate has been allowed to be hired or not hired. Um so there is some wiggle room, but you know, again, I guess I would caution it's usually applied for circumstances where there are no other candidates or. Um like some of the examples, you know, rural schools where it's just really been difficult to find other uh employees that can fill the position.
Or unique set of circumstances like.
Correct.
Okay. Um so you would not. Oppose an amendment to this bill. To allow for a good cause exception for those unique set of circumstances.
So I think this would.
Candidate. Where no other candidate. Um. Would be more would be more qualified.
Um so Senator, uh good cause already exists in the existing nepotism. So this simply would apply that standard to the legislature. Um I don't believe the good cause has been interpreted. Uh to apply to. Um. The best candidate. And and you know, that that's a policy call, obviously, for the legislature to make. Um however. Um part of the beauty of a nepotism law is it it is a bright line rule. It's relatively easy to apply. Um one of the challenges with nepotism, for example, is. A relative is likely to have interned or had experience or something. It's they'll always appear to be the best candidate. And so just, you know, generally speaking, making that determination objectively of who the best candidate is. Um would be difficult without sort of maybe a harsher, more bright line kind of rule.
Okay, but so this bill is not necessary because we already have an anti nepotism? I thought we don't.
We have one that applies. I I want to say just the executive branch, but obviously there's some entities that are technically in the executive branch. Uh the current law does not apply to legislative or judicial branch. This would apply it to the legislature.
Okay, and so if we pass this, would that? Good cause exception? Still. It's still being practiced?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good.
Thank you, Senator.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
Other questions? If not, that was the end of the agenda. If uh. All my colleagues are ready to vote. Okay, I'll go go back to the top uh to SB thirteen twenty relating to settlement of claims related to Maui wildfires makes. General fund appropriations for fiscal twenty six and twenty seven to fund the settlement of claims related to Maui wildfires, assuming we end up with an actual settlement. Uh recommendation is to defect the date uh April twenty three, twenty fifty seven, blank out the appropriations. There's some tech amendments. And then we'll note the appropriations in the committee report, which was four hundred million and twenty six and. Over four hundred and seven million and twenty seven. Questions or concerns? If not, Senator Vice Chair for the vote.
On SB thirteen twenty, recommendations to pass with amendments. Chair Rhodes.
Aye.
Vice Chair Wilson.
Aye.
Senator Chang.
Aye.
Senator Sanbun and Ventura.
Aye.
And Senator Awaz excused and measure passes.
Thank you. Next up is SB fifteen fourteen. This establishes a temporary working group to study the feasibility of transitioning the Hawaii State Legislature's regular session from one that meets for. Three months to one that goes all year. Um. Recommendation here is to go ahead and pass it with some amendments. We'll make uh several technical changes to the working group structural. We'll place the working group. Oh, I'm sorry. We're not. We're gonna. We're just gonna be.
Yes.
Okay. Um specify that state employees shall serve without compensation and specify that non state employees may be reimbursed for travel expenses. Clarify that the co chairs of the working group may invite additional members to join the working group. Clarify that members shall not be subject to HRS chapter eighty four, which is public employee standards conduct solely by virtue of their membership in the working group. And we'll direct LRB to share any drafts or work product pertaining to the LRB study. The on the same topic requested by HM Hawaii concurrent, I'm sorry, House Concurrent Resolution one thirty eight. Uh Senate Draft one twenty twenty four with the working group in order to help direct the group's efforts and avoid duplicative work. Require the working group. Group blah, require the working group to produce findings regarding the relative advantages and disadvantages of adopting adopting a continuous legislative session. And we'll change the date upon which the working group dissolved to forty days before the commitment commitments commencement of the. Twenty seven regular session. Is that right? Twenty seven? Okay. And we'll. Go ahead. Uh just yeah, there is an appropriation. Go ahead and defect the date to April twenty three, twenty fifty seven. Clear enough? Questions or concerns? If not, Senator Gavin.
On SB fifteen fourteen, recommendations to pass with amendments. Are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Next up is SB five forty four. This requires courts to consider certain factors when sentencing a person convicted as an adult for an offense that the person committed when the person was a minor. Um. Recommendations to pass as is. Questions or concerns? If not, Senator Gabbard.
On SB five forty four, recommendations to pass unamended. Are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure is adopted.
Thank you. Next up is SB six ninety one. This establishes a minimum age of twelve for delinquency adjudications. All right, so recommendations to pass with amendments on page seven will change the wording from a petition alleging delinquency for a violation of law. To a petition alleging violation or attempted violation of any federal, state, or local law or county ordinance. Will accept the requested amendment to HRS section five seventy one dash forty four, which will delete the ability. For a child under the age of twelve to come under part of the delinquent of the. Sorry. Of the I'm calling it the delinquency law for shorthand sake to due to the recommendation of a psychologist or other. Uh healthcare professional. We need healthcare as a good profession. Okay, we'll just we'll leave it at book general uh due to the recommendation of a psychologist or other professional and there'll be some tech amendments as well. Questions or concerns? If not, Senator Gabbard.
On SB six ninety one, the chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Uh and noting the. Um next up is SB ten twenty eight allows community service in place of the assessment of any fines. Fees or court costs against the person who was adjudicated for a traffic related offense committed while the person was on a minor under the age of eighteen or against the person's parent or guardian. Uh the recommendation here. Excellent. Good. Good, just only technical amendments. Questions or concerns?
Question.
Sir.
The community service that is replaced, is that through the state? Is are there organizations that? Or is it just, you know, hey, Auntie, can you sign off on my paper?
Uh suit of state, as far as I know.
There's a list.
There's a list.
There's a list.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Other other concerns? If not, Senator Gabbard.
On SB ten twenty eight, recommendations to pass with amendments. Any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure is adopted.
Thank you. Next up is SB thirteen ten, and this pleads the term agent of the contractor in section twenty eight dash seventeen and eight forty six. Dash two point seven to comply with the requirements of Federal Bureau of Investigation. The Bureau deemed the term overly broad for purposes of assessing accessing its criminal history background information. Um we'd. Like to see the documents still. So I'm gonna put this. I'm gonna defer this until and it is a single. Uh let's see. We'll defer it. Uh we'll defer decision making on this one until. Thursday, the twentieth of February at ten o'clock in this room, one one six and. Hope to hook up with you guys to get to look at the paperwork. Okay, thanks. Uh next up is SB thirteen nineteen relating to identification processing requires the Attorney General's identification system include criminal cases initiated via citations that resulted in conviction deferred acceptance of. Guilty or no contender plea or a conditional discharge and court order identification and processing in such cases. Um. See. Okay, on uh SB thirteen nineteen, we'll go ahead and move it forward with technical amendments only. Questions or concerns?
Yes.
Okay.
Um major concerns. I mean, we're moving towards expungement and this. Bill, the way it is, doesn't allow for so for the expungement of certain cases. And as testified to by the Attorney General, it can be used towards. The determination of bail or no bail. If we put it into the HCIC. And for those reasons, because it goes against. Our policy towards expunging certain violations, which this does not do a carve out for. Um I'm gonna be voting no.
Okay, other questions or concerns? If not, question, Senator Gabbard for the vote.
On SB thirteen nineteen uh to pass with amendments um. Chair Rhodes.
Aye.
Vice Chair with size, Senator Chang.
Aye.
Senator Sanbun Ventura.
No.
And Senator Awang.
No.
The measure passes.
Okay, thank you. Next up is SB fifteen forty five relating to nepotism and repeals the exemption that the legislative branch currently has for against nepotism. Uh so recommendation is um. To pass it unamended. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation on SB fifteen forty five is to pass unamended. Are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure is adopted.
Thank you very much, everyone, colleagues, and everyone who testified. Have a good weekend.